County Council meeting is now in session. The Honorable Robert Winkler will give the invocation pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for another day, for all the many blessings you give us. Thank you that tomorrow's election day and there's no more political campaign ads on TV after tomorrow. Lord, just thank you for the opportunity to sit up here and try to represent the people as best we can, give us all the wisdom to make the best decisions with the information that's put before us. Give us all safe travels so we go our separate ways this evening, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I want to welcome everybody today. We have quite a crowd in here. You won't tell the York City Fire Department. And look around, this is, I think we only have a couple more meetings in this room before we move to the new building. Hopefully, we'll get the last council meeting toward the end of the year. We'll be in the new building, so Mr. Williams can enjoy it with us. First order of business is appearances. And Bill, you want to take the lead on this? This is recognition of York County's 101 Citizens Academy graduates.
Yes, sir. And as you know, about four years ago, y'all as a council made it one of your goals that we made sure that our citizens are informed of what we do, why we do it, and, you know, we're not wasting their money and that we're doing a good job. And York 101 came out of that, and it's been going on very well for the last four years. The cost to the citizens, of course, is free, other than the time. It is a nine-month program. It's gone from six months when we first started to nine months. It's four, five hours, a day, one day, for nine months. And the citizens come and they learn what we do. And I think the great thing about this program is the people teaching this class are the ones that are actually doing the jobs. We're not bringing in the folks that just manage it. We're bringing in people that actually are doing the stuff, and I think that's a real good thing. You have to be from your county to be in this class, and we do that because we have so many people. Right now, we've got six people ready, that have already signed up for next year. So, we're very pleased with this going on. So, I'm going to call Linda up because she's going to introduce this class, and we're going to present them with certificates.
Okay. Okay. Judy Benson, she's not here. Allison Cleveland.
Thank you, Allison.
Kathleen Cole. Bryant Cook. Joanna De Pastina.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Allison. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ruth Doll.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good to see you.
Mike De Bra. Sherry Farrell. Barbara Freiburger. Fred Freiburger. Terry Harper. Ann Gumpel. Catherine Harris. LeVay Johnson Lundey. Mary Pfeiffer. No, Daniel Remmer. And April Smith. And Patricia Teeter are not here. Thank you.
Linda, I wanted to say if you have space next time, since I did the first class and it was only six months, I want to sign up again for next year. But I don't want to bump anybody else out. I only have some space.
Okay. Very good. We'd love to have you.
Thank you, sir.
And the class is all still behind me, even though your instructions were clear. She told us to come through the line, get to stand in the hall. And you know you're supposed to listen to her, but we are defying your wishes, and we're presenting you with the flowers from the class, as well as your... Thank you for your love of York County.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Linda. Next item is public forum. When I call your name, if it's under public hearing, let me know, because you have free, all the time you want, under public hearing. What you signed up for is just two minutes, and that said, I have to shut you down. So, if it's something that's under public hearing in the agenda, just let me know, and you can wait until it comes up. That way, you can speak all you want. Everybody with me on that? Okay. Ronnie Taylor? And that's not under a public hearing?
No.
Okay.
Ronnie Taylor, 1411 Lincoln Road, York. I want to invite all of y'all to York County Veterans Memorial Veterans Day Parade this Saturday at 10 o'clock. If you want to be in the parade, you need to be there at 9:30. If you want to ride in a car, you need to bring your car. But we're going to dedicate the monument. Everybody that's watching this on the TV too, please come. We're going to dedicate the monument, that day the monument be set this Wednesday. And I want to thank counsel for all the help y'all give us.
Thank you for what you do, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Next person's Andy Smith. It just says ordinance change. Not under public hearing?
That's right.
It is, or not?
Not public.
Not? Okay, got you.
Name's Andy Smith, 8270 Park Place Road, New York. I'm speaking on the proposed ordinance change for the 350-foot minimum road frontage requirement on the roads. I understand the public hearing was the last meeting. I'm sure county council followed the rules and advertised in the paper, but I don't think the public was aware of the ramifications this is going to have on the western part of York County. I feel like it's going to have more impact than anything the 2020 land use plan had, the 2035 land use plan, and any rezoning. We've tried to locate some restaurants in York, and we always hear from the name brand ones, there's not enough rooftops for restaurant. And looking at the map, you know, it's going to really impact the western side of York County. I just ask y'all to, I know the 19th is supposed to be the final reading on that ordinance. I'd like to see it delayed to allow everybody that's going to be affected, from the farmers that have relied on their property as their retirement, to, you know, family land splits, and developers as well. This thing was kind of thrown in the mix real quick, and it was under the pending ordinance rule, which that stopped everything. People have been working on plans for a year, and, you know, that kind of put a halt to all that. So, I would ask y'all for some time to let everybody work together to make sure this thing's done in a smart way. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Next person is Pamela, is that Harkin? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so you're going to wait. Okay. And next person is, I think that's Ricky Compton? Was I right?
Yes, you're right. Thank you for the time.
Yes, sir.
Ricky Compton, 1952 St. Paul Church Road in Clover. And just wanted to talk to you about the ordinance change for the 350-foot rule. I'm a, I own a real estate company here. I do real estate consulting and design, and I work with a lot of builders, home builders and developers. And I just want to voice my opinion and ask a few questions of you guys. This will dramatically change the way home building is done, single-family home building is done in York County. And my question to you is, what brought about the change? And you can answer these later. I don't expect you to answer these in two minutes. But what's the reasoning for the change? And I've been told on several occasions that it was due to DOT standards. We're trying to meet DOT standards, is what I was told. And it's actually in an email from the county employees. We have that, several emails that we're trying to meet DOT standards. But unfortunately, the DOT standards are drastically different than this 350-foot rule, more in the favor of less. So, I have all of that information here. I'd be happy to give it to you if you want to read over it. But essentially, what's going to happen is if we change this to where people can't split property on certain roads that it appears to be are just determined by kind of a blanket approach, there's a lot of roads that, if you look at the DOT traffic studies, don't really meet the requirement to have that sort of a road frontage. It's going to dramatically impact the people who build anywhere from two to 10 homes a year, which is, if you look at all my paperwork, which I'll show you afterwards, is millions and millions of dollars in the local York economy. I have a list of vendors who work for these builders, who anywhere from 40 to 95 percent of their business is people who build on one-acre lots, which are going to be almost impossible on some of the roads if this is passed. So, this has a huge economic impact that I don't know, everybody's had a chance, like he said before, it was kind of pushed through quickly, that everybody's had a chance to really talk about what this means just besides safety of the roads. So, I just wanted an opportunity to talk to you guys. Unfortunately, I only have two minutes, and it's over. But I would love a chance to meet with any of you guys afterwards and share some of the information that we've put together, because, like I said, it has been told to us that we're trying to meet DOT standards, and it's drastically different.
Take my card.
Thank you, Ricky.
You can give that to Mr. Kendry, and he can hand the package around to us.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Next person, Cheryl Boyd.
My name is Cheryl Boyd, and I reside at 2454 McGill Road in Smyrna. And I spoke at the last meeting regarding the ordinance change on the 350-foot road requirement. And I'm back again today to, I feel like that all the council members should drive some of these roads that they've got on the list. I think it would be a fair statement to say that if you can't drive a tractor-trailer rig over a bridge on that road, it shouldn't be considered a major collector road. The road I live on, we have a bridge, and it has a weight limit on it. And not to only mention that, if you want to make us a major collector road, somebody needs to come down there and work on the road, and let's do something about it so the school bus doesn't have to take the right ditch when it meets a car coming down the road. I again feel like that there was, I looked at the map again today, looking at a lot of the roads, Sanderford Road, Shannon Road, and calling them a connector road. Well, looking at what they connect to, every road, in a sense, connects to another road. But whether we consider it to be a high-traffic road, that's another thought. But that's just my opinion of it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item's consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, public hearing. Hold public hearing case number 1820 to rezon from BD1 to BD3. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak?
You might want to explain the process about this being public hearing only.
Okay, that's a good point. This is kind of a new way that we're doing it, that we're just going to have a public hearing, no action item on this particular item. We just want to hear what people have to say, and then we'll get to the planning commission. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the past, we have had staff provide an intro on this, just to give a background. I assume that we'll be doing that this evening. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good idea. All right.
You've done this before.
I don't look like it, but I have.
No, I am.
Thanks again. The requested action before you is a rezoning approximately an acre and a half from business development BD1, BD1, to business development 3, BD3. The applicants proposing to use the site for auto sales. Site is located at 102 Weatherwood Street in the Rock Hill community, and this is part of the Windwood subdivision. Existing site conditions include one single-family home. Surrounding zoning currently exists BD3 to the west. Urban development UD to the east. RC1 is a single-family residential to the north. And the city of Rock Hill is located to the south along with the, along Weatherwood. Surrounding uses include commercially, existing commercial uses to the west, and single-family residential, the Windwood subdivision to the north. South is right-of-way, railroad right-of-way, and the city of Rock Hill. And this is located in Council District 6. That concludes my summary of the site. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
I do have one.
Yes.
Is the proposal consistent with the comp plan?
The comprehensive plan recommends single-family residential.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. You want to speak? I'm going to do against first.
She's with, not against. She's for.
She's for. So, I'll give you, just let the ones against first. Yes, ma'am.
I'm giving him a copy of the petition that has been circulated around our neighborhood. I only got 41 signatures because I just couldn't get around to every place physically. My name is Pamela Harker, H-A-R-K-E-R, and I reside at 4681 West Wind Drive. We went through this last year when this property was tried to be rezoned to a BD3. This property is currently in the Windwood subdivision, our subdivision. It is currently zoned a BD1. There is no positive benefit will be derived from rezoning this property to a BD3. This area is considered a area stability. I have heard in this chamber, as well as the ZBA and the planning commission, that a BD3 is not a good fit for a neighborhood. They, a BD3 comes with a host of unpleasant problems for people in the neighborhood. They open the door for many unsuitables that must be lived with every day, 24 hours, seven days a week, by the neighborhood families. There is a large amount of young family with young children in our neighborhood. It's just not a good fit for not only our neighborhood, for any neighborhood. They want to put a proposed car lot this time and have it rezoned. Car lots are loud, they are bright. They also attract undesirables that are wanting to steal from the car lot and will come into our neighborhood and say, well, let's just make it a big night and see what else that we can get. It's not safe, that it's going to bring unwarranted strangers into our neighborhood. Cars will be tried out in our neighborhood, so let's fly down through the neighborhood. To rezon this property to a BD3 will not meet the growth management goals and York County vision statement. We do not oppose growth. This property is currently zoned a BD1, and in the best interest of many, should stay zoned that. Please make the right decision again, and allow us to continue to live the quality of life that we now enjoy. Each of you would not want a BD3 in your neighborhood and would have to put up with the horrible contention. Please consider this in your matter, and please do the right thing again this year, and do not allow it to go through as you did last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else against? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Brenda Carpenter, and I live at 4671 West Wind Drive, which is in the Windwood subdivision, Rock Hill, 29732. I am opposed to the rezoning of this property at 102 Weatherwood Street, which is also a part of the Windwood subdivision from a BD1 to a BD3. It's hard for me to understand how the property in a residential subdivision got a BD1 zoning in the first place. To rezon this parcel to a BD3 would open it up to many uses that are not in keeping with the residential neighborhood atmosphere, and certainly would affect our quality of life and the value of all properties in our subdivision. To rezon this property to a BD3, for whatever purposes are being proposed at this time, would open the property up to being used for the dog kennel that was asked for on this property in September of 2017. Any business that would go on that property could increase cut-through traffic, which is already bad in our neighborhood, and put our children at risk of being hurt and more damage to the roads in our community. Please respect the wishes of our community and deny this proposed rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else opposed? Okay, so people for. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nora Daher. I'm the potential buyer of that property. First, I would like to introduce myself, like we're planning or would like to have our own family business. So, we'd like to have it as a car dealer. And that property, it's in between of two properties. One of them is zoned BD3, and the other one is industrial. So, it's in between. I don't know if you have the drawings in front of you. And also, down the street, like two properties down the street, there isn't a car lot. So, the same business. And we look, when we look at that property, and I did some research online, that house or that residential place exists since 1940. So, it's before that subdivision exists. And I will give you such a small example. If you see three people standing, one in between is not smoking, and the two on the side is smoking. Can you tell the one in the middle, hey, it's not a smoking area? So, and dimension-wise, it's smaller than the other, and as I said, it's surrounded. Like the two other property, it's like hogging the small one in between. And that property, it's zoned BD1. BD1, it means that, as you know, we can open a car wash. And I do believe that car wash, if you do the calculation, it can generate at least more than 10 cars per hour. That's the minimum calculation. And they operate more than us as business hours. The car dealer, you know, it's not going to generate as traffic as a car wash or car repair. So, generating traffic comparing to what's zoned for, it's not comparable. And if we're going to say, we cannot, you know, it cannot be BD3. So, why these two properties? It's BD3 and industrial. And we're still insisting that that property in the middle cannot be BD3. But it's because it's going to generate traffic. But, you know, on the two sides, it's zoned for, if let's say if I want to go and say, hey, I would like to buy your property, the one next door, and the next day I can open a car lot and the other one also. But just this one in the middle, I cannot do it. So, I hear what the ladies said, but also like, I, there is like, when you talk about traffic, already it's BD1, we can open a car wash, we can open car repair, but not car dealer. So, as I said, if we're lucky, we're going to have one customer per hour if we're a car dealer. And about robbery thing, well, I live in Baxter Village in Fort Mill, and that's considered one of the safest maybe communities in the area. And we do still have accidents and robbery accidents happen. So, there is no place you can say robbery is not going to happen. So, everything is, it might happen, maybe somebody that will come to your house and robbery your house. And we cannot say, we don't want a car dealer, because somebody might attract, be attracted to that car dealer and come take the car. When you park your car on the street, there is a risk that somebody come and robbery your car or steal it. So, robbery-wise, I think, you know, you cannot say it's like more risk to have robbery, say anything. And excuse my accent and my language. English is my third language. My husband, he's supposed to be here with me today, but his mom, he lost his mom Friday. He had to travel overseas. And I'm here to defend what we believe. We believe that this property, it's, as I said, it can be BD3 as, it's going to be family business and going to be run by me and by my husband. And I don't think that it's going to generate more traffic than a car wash. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else in favor? Yes, sir.
How y'all doing?
Welcome.
I'm Herbert Alton, live at 1586 Addy Church Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. And I'm here in favor of the proposal to change it, because it took business beside of us is BD3, and ours is 1. And you can't sell a piece of property between two people. And I don't understand why they don't want us to have what they have. It's an acre and something, a little over acre and a half. And we inherited it from our parents, and they wanted us to sell it. And it's impossible to sell an, in between two businesses like it is. We tried to live there, and Mama, every morning, they would wake her up coming in with trucks and things. And I heard nobody complain about the people next door to us on either side, and they're busy all the time. And to tell you where the property is, it used to be 161 until they moved it over. And it's a side road. And we're about 150 yards from the stoplight. So, if they worried about traffic, they'll come in at the stop site and go to our house, and come back out and go back to that way. There won't be any traffic in the neighborhood. I don't know why they call us part of the neighborhood, because we were built a house in the 40s. And it's been there ever since. It was there before the neighborhood was there. But every business along that road, up and down the road, is higher rating than us. They BD3. And we had a hard time selling it. It's easy to sell it if it's zoned right. And I can't understand why this one can't be the same as the ones next door. A lot of things they've said, if this happened, if that happened, you can predict that about any property. But our property, it's a burden to us because we cannot sell it. Nobody wants to live there with two businesses on each side. And we're just stuck with it. And we appreciate it if you zone it BD3, so we can sell it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in favor? Do we have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, hold public hearing case number 1821, UD rezoning project. Anybody here want to speak against?
Is Steve going?
I think Steve, did you want to speak?
Tell us about this one.
Just to explain it to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is part two of the District 2 UD rezoning project. The reason we split it in two is because of the sheer number of properties who are participating. The project before you is a result of a text amendment from 2015 in which residential uses were removed from the UD district. By removing this, we have a significant amount of existing residential properties zoned UD, and we had a lot of vacant pieces as well that were in residential areas who are intending on developing. So, as a solution, we reached out to the affected property owners in those areas and invited them to a public meeting. We held that in June of this year. We had 44 property owners attend. We took down their names, and if they felt as if they wanted to file for the rezoning request there, we took their applications, and if they didn't, they could think about in return if they wished. They were completely a voluntary program. We posted the site for rezoning. We had approximately, I think in this round, we had about 53, something like that. So, I'm sure you received a number of calls, Councilman Love, on the significant number of beautiful blue and gold signs out there. And for the folks in the audience who have any questions, those signs are out there because we're upholding our duty of notifying, posting notice on all properties that are subject to rezoning. That's our statutory requirements, and that's all it is. That's our statutory requirements, and that's all it is. And those lovely signs will come down as soon as we are complete with tonight's public hearing. This is a public hearing, and there are future actions to be taken by the planning commission, and it will come back to you all as soon as that is complete.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Steve. Once again, anybody here want to speak against? Speak against. Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Have a second? Discussion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item. Council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not to exceed $10 million general obligation bonds of York County, South Carolina, Lake Wally Parks and Recreation District, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended, to provide for the levy and collection of ad verum taxes for the repayment of said bonds and other matters related thereto. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve third reading.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider third reading case number 1809, to rezonate from RUD to Light Industrial at 2744 Meadow Road in the Clover community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider third reading case number 1811, to rezonate from RC1 to BD2 at 1383 Gold Hill Road in the Fort Mill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider third reading case number 1812, to rezonate from RD1 to RUD, 531 Neely Store Road in the Rock Hill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider third reading case number 1814, to rezonate from RD to RC2 at 4270 Marshall Road in the Rock Hill community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider third reading case number 1815, to rezonate from RUD to, and RD1 to BD3 at along Highway 557 and Glenn Brandon Road in the Clover community.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I just want to, I'm not a big fan of council-initiated zonings, and I've said that when we first brought this one up. I share the concerns that staff pointed out about it, and I'm just none in favor of
Anybody? Question on the motion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Next item, council approve first reading by title only of an ordinance to amend the code of York County, South Carolina, to establish a board of rural fire control for the Bethel Rural Fire District, and to transfer authority to manage and operate Bethel Rural Fire District from an administrative division of York County to such Bethel District Board of Rural Fire Control.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
The, one, I had concerns about this one too, but staff says they're, they're supporting it. But I guess one of the things that I would like to say, I don't know if the purpose of the name, one, one reason that it was given to, to put this back in was because everybody else has a, has a fire tax district board. This has got a different name. I don't know why, but I would think that it would best was consistent among all of them.
Michael?
Sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the title of the board mirrors the, the original ordinance establishing the board for the Bethel Rural Fire District, and it simply is the same language that was used initially, but there is no prohibition in changing the name to reflect a fire tax district like the other boards across the county.
If all other ones are named that way, I think that would be best.
We'll certainly double-check then, see, see the, what the actual ordinances say versus just the known-as kind of name. Thank you.
Question on the motion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, council consider approval of the execution of the abandonment of easement and quitclaim non-warranty deed to Four Norm LLC regarding designated easement interest in Project South Carolina Route 160 Phase 2 Track 12A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, oh, sorry, Mr. Johnson.
We are, we asked the owner to swap us properties, and they have declined that.
That's not accurate.
All right, what, because that's...
This, this isn't my issue, but I'll be happy to recite what I think the issue is. There is an LLC that owns the property before you. There is a potentially related company with similar members, but it is a distinct ownership interest.
It's not the same company.
It is not the same.
And I don't have any objection. All right, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions? Question on the motion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, committee reports. Planning and zoning, the Honorable Allison Love.
We met tonight, and some of the people that had some concerns tonight will be glad to know that we are reviewing those, the length of that change, bringing it more in line with the, what SEDOT requires. So we met, we met tonight and just had a discussion and overview of what this change would entail and the effect, positive and negative effects of it.
That's it? Next committee report, finance and operations, the Honorable Michael Johnson.
Finance and operations met at 5:45 tonight, had a very quick meeting. We approved, and I apologize, I did not write it down.
Patricia Mickel?
Patricia Mickel. For the Veterans Memorial, York County Veterans Memorial Park.
Just, just a question, since somebody asked me about it. All members of that committee, are they all within the one district, or are they...
No, they're from all over the county.
All over the county, okay. Just, I didn't know what to answer when a question was asked of me. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Council member, new non-agenda comments? Anybody have any non-agenda comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Winkler.
I'll just second what Mr. Taylor said this evening. Saturday morning should be a pretty morning for the, the only parade, I believe, going on Saturday, so, and it's the dedication of the Veterans Memorial Monument and Park Saturday, which we've all had a hand in, so I'd love to see all, six of my fellow council members there for that service that morning.
We all have to bring a car?
Unless you want to walk, it's only two blocks.
Oh, I thought you'd say, well, you can jump in my car.
I don't want to be seen with you.
Yeah, whatever. Okay, so no citizen concerns signed up, so do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir. Move we go into executive session to receive legal advice concerning concrete plants, to receive legal advice around RV parks, and to discuss a contractual matter involving the sale of the Fort Mill magistrate building.
Second.
Discussion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
We'll be back at 15 till. We just came out of executive session, there were two action items. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. I mean, we authorize the adjustment of the cost, the sale of the Fort Mill magistrate building to reflect as best as remediation.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those papers say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have one other motion, sir?
Yeah, move adjourned.
Second.
That's it, okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.